Call to order, the city council meeting of Tuesday, January 16th, 2008. Please stand for the plate.
I am Melissa Yates, do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Thank you.
So, is there approval of the agenda? Has everyone looked over? Is there anything council would like?
I'll move with approval of the agenda.
A second.
Is there anyone from the public? Oh, okay. Move by Beal, second by Homan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
First on the agenda is staff updates. Does council have any questions regarding staff updates for staff?
I was Chief Ford, I don't think. Yeah, I don't think Chief Ford is here today. I had one question, but I just think I'll mention it anyway. He talked about the homeless and transient problem. And that says, "A recent residential burglary involved a transient person as someone passed away recently." So I was going to ask him about that, and he had said that, see if there's some stakeholders from the community-based groups that can brainstorm ideas, identify potential solutions that needs to be initiated and established. So, he's not here to kind of comment on that, but I just wanted to bring it up as an important item.
Yeah, I think starting some kind of workshop for that would be a good idea.
Yes, you know, I actually wanted to get pretty involved in that. I've had a past in which I, my past, I've had interactions in a lot of different situations like this and certain times in which I've been involved in organizations. So, yeah, I'd like to get involved in that.
You had that, Melissa?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any other questions regarding staff update?
I just had one question for Kim of the museum, but she's not here either. And it looks like she talked about putting an ad with Forest Meadows Golf Course.
Yeah.
And hopefully that was pulled, because the course is no longer there.
Yeah.
We will verify that.
Pardon me?
We will verify.
Okay. That's it.
There is no other comment. Move on to council update, and I will start to, Melissa?
Okay, well, I've been involved in the Calaveras, trying to plan for the Calaveras Transit Agency, you know, having to do with our transit, and starting a joint powers agreement and developing something with the county where we can work with our bus system and so on in the county and form a completely kind of new approach to it with something similar to COG, with the county and city being a joint powers authority, and then work with, through COG, and see if we can't improve the transit system.
Councilmember Beal?
Just this evening, I attended briefly the, kind of reopening for Camps Restaurant. They remodeled the bar and restaurant area. It looks really good, and hopefully people stop by and check it out.
I attended the LACCO meeting last week. We approved the Speaker of the Union for, my mind just went blank.
Greek Creek?
Saddle Creek, thank you. Saddle Creek. And we also had public comment during that time to talk about possible bringing annexation for Central Calaveras Fire District, which was related to the measure M-TAC that they, that did not get passed by the people due to annexation issues. So that will be coming to us this year as well. And then I was reappointed to the League Environmental Quality Committee, so I'll be attending those again this year. And our first kickoff is this Thursday in Sacramento. And that's spread across the state, both northern and southern California. And that's our last half.
Public comment. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter not on the agenda. State law prohibits the city council from acting upon matters not listed on the agenda. Matters raised by the public will be automatically referred to staff or placed on the next meeting agenda. Each speaker has a maximum of three minutes for public comment. And maybe reduce the amount of time based on the number of persons wishing to speak. And we will open it to public comment. Is there any public? No? Okay. Moving on to consent agenda. Is there any item council wishes? Is there any public? Yes. Any public comment on the consent agenda? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move approval for the consent agenda.
Second.
First by Linda, seconded by Scott, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Onto our regular agenda. Number, agenda number one, Calaveras Visitors Bureau.
Hi, everybody. I think I'm going to do without the microphone, am I? No? Okay. Is it working? Okay. So I've provided a written report on six months of marketing for the Calaveras Visitors Bureau. I did promise you quarterly reports, and since I wasn't able to get onto the agenda until now, I happened to be able to compile the entire six months' worth of data. So that's what I've given to you as a written report here. Obviously, there's a lot of information in there, way too much to go through in 15 minutes. So I thought I'd pick out just one small piece that is part of a separate presentation that I'll do as a PowerPoint, and that is the marketing we did for the Mark Twain Wild West Fest. So before I get to that, I just want to let you know, this basically is a compilation of all of the marketing highlights reports that we put together every month. So all of those are available to download directly from our website. And what I did was I aggregated the information over six months and put it into this report. So here's the presentation on the Mark Twain Wild West Fest advertising. So the first item that we did for advertising was we contracted with Capital Public Radio to switch our regular advertising over to specifically the Mark Twain Wild West Fest. The campaign ran the second week in October on KXJZ 20 times, KXPR 15 times, KUOP 20 times, and KKT 15 times. The copy was, "We get support from the Calaveras Visitors Bureau, home of the Mark Twain Wild West Fest in Angels Camp, Saturday, the 21st. A full day of entertainment celebrating life on the wild frontier. Details at gocalaveras.com/marktwainwildwestfest." And the reason that we directed people to a dedicated page on our website was because the Mark Twain Wild West Fest website was having significant difficulties still at this point. So we had a dedicated page for this.
Who operates that website?
The Angels Camp Commemorative Committee. But they were having problems with, they had taken it over from somebody who was working on it last year, and they didn't have permissions to access every page. So there were all kinds of technical difficulties with it. So we made sure to have complete and full information on our website to make up for that. So normally, for Facebook, we have a two-pronged approach. We do Facebook posts, and we have a Facebook ad campaign that runs every day, year-round. And we switch it up during the seasons. For September 25th to October 20th, we ran a dedicated ad specific to the Mark Twain Wild West Fest. And on that campaign, usually our Facebook ad campaigns, the goal is to get more likes on our Facebook page, which results in between 0.5 to 1% increase each month. But this time, we switched that up, so the goal was clicking through to that webpage on our site that was the Mark Twain Wild West Fest page. We put together an ad with a slideshow of photos from the Mark Twain Wild West Fest, and we featured some music from Ernie Seitz's "The Yodeling Cowboy", who was also scheduled to perform here. The results were, we had 1,308 reactions, 77 comments, and 525 shares. And now I'm going to attempt to play you that ad. I'm not going to attempt to play you that. What you can do is you can take that, I actually, in my written report that I gave you, it has that link. So if you paste that into Facebook, it'll take you to the ad. It's really a shame, I don't remember my login information for Facebook, and I didn't realize I was going to have to know that, so. But it's cute. And we pulled, we pulled music from Ernie Seitz's website, from the best music that would work with the slideshow. And it had very good results. You can see more detail on the next slide. So here we can see a little bit more detail. You'll see that there were 1,308 clicks, but we also had, it was served up to 38,930 people. So even if people didn't click on it, they still saw the information. And then I thought you might be interested to see what the demographics look like, which is also in your printed copy. And it shows the breakdown of age and gender. And as you'll see, the majority of people interacting with that ad were female, which is good, because they tend to be the ones that book the family activities and attendance to events. So another thing we did was we sponsored the Sunset Magazine e-newsletter. So we were the sole sponsor of their weekly emailed newsletter for October 4th. We had three ad units, each clicking through to that same dedicated page on the CVB website. The results were that we had 240 unique clicks. Actually, we set up a separate dedicated page for that particular ad, so we could see how, separate that out, see how that did compared to everything else. We also had a dedicated blog. It was called Tips for Mark Twain Fun at the Mark Twain Wild West Fest. We sent that out to our email newsletter subscribers. Those are all Optin subscribers, 10,000 of them. We had a 20% open rate, and we had 193 unique visits to that, to that particular blog. And then to the dedicated webpage overall, we linked it to our Facebook ad. We promoted it in our newsletter, and we had 1,570 unique visits to that page. So, marketing doesn't stop before the event. Cadence and I, Cadence is our social media marketing manager. She and I both went to the Mark Twain Wild West Fest, and we obtained more than 1,000 new photos for promotion. We've already edited 74 of them for print quality. They're ready to go. And we'll be sharing those with Destination Angels Camp and the Angels Camp Commemorative Committee, of course. So I mentioned that for our Facebook promotions, we don't just do a dedicated ad, we also do Facebook posts. So I, you've got a lot more information on the top-performing Facebook posts in the printout that I gave you. But to aggregate that information on the outcomes for that marketing, we reached a total of 51,775 people. We had 1,886 reactions, comments, and shares, 1,943 clicks. And then you can see the additional posts. So that's just one of the posts right there. And that's the end of this presentation. So if you consider the written report that I gave you that's titled "First Half 2017-18 Fiscal Year Marketing Report", and basically, that level of detail goes into very many of these things in here. So I just fleshed out one little tiny piece of the marketing that we've done over the six months to give you an idea of the kind of in-depth marketing that we do. Do you have any questions?
Well, I've been coming to the meetings, I have just a comment that, from what I've seen, even with the website, and Angels Camp has been promoted, you know, like we had talked about a little bit more, so be really pleased with that, to see how that is coming along. You do a wonderful job of your website. You're a genius.
Thank you.
And, and I just, again, I see, in the meetings, when you comment, I see you bringing in Angels Camp, which is kind of our request, so I want to thank you for that.
Absolutely, thank you. And one of the things we have done with our reports, since we had these meetings with Angels Camp earlier in the year, last year, we have broken out a lot of Angels Camp information on our regular monthly reports. So you can see, for instance, the social media posts, we break out how many we make specifically for Angels Camp. We also do that with our Facebook posts, the top-performing Facebook posts each month. We break out the top performing for the county and the top performing for Angels Camp. I think those might be the main places that we do that. But we're also looking at providing additional information in the future. We want to, because we don't list all of the Facebook posts that we make, and I realize that could be very important information, and I think that you'll really enjoy the way that we're marketing Angels Camp. And so, beginning with this month, we'll start to make a list of every single Facebook post that we've made, so that you can see how we're marketing Angels Camp in total, as opposed to just these, these final numbers that I give you. So you get more of a full picture.
The VIP cards, can you remind me what that is? And the 1,852 seems like a big number. Is that better than last year, or?
Yeah, I remember last year you weren't very impressed with the number, and I was thinking, Scott's going to be really impressed this year. And that's because when we launched the, so, the VIP program is, is a free program offered to visitors coming into Calaveras County. It's, it basically gives them discounts to all the businesses that have signed up to advertise in the Calaveras Experience Guide, if they choose to be part of the program. And those discounts are completely decided by them. They can give whatever they like. We put out, we have a list on our website of all the businesses that are participating and all of the, all of the discounts that are available. And we also have a printed guide that we give to people when they come into the visitor center. The reason that number has significantly increased is because with our new mobile responsive website, people can sign up for it online, and so now they can show a digital version. And so, you'll see now that the online number is way outpacing the regular, the visitor center number. It's starting to outpace it, and we're going to see those numbers increase and increase. So, that's the reason. So it's very good news. It's working really well on the website.
And is that kind of reasoning, does that kind of carry over to the traffic? I know some walk-ins are down, but the web visitors are way up. So you don't need to walk in to get information?
They are. Also, another data point that we're currently including that we haven't before is how many visitor's guides digitally, online, are being accessed. And in the last six months, there were 799. Phone calls are also up. Web visits are up. So people are getting that information elsewhere. So at first, when I started to see those numbers drop, I was getting really concerned, but then I realized everything else is rising. And I was actually talking to Betsy Utley from Worldmark, and she sees a very similar correlation between information that's actually received face-to-face by their visitors and what people are doing online. So they're, all of their online information seeking is going up as well.
Great, thank you. Good job.
You're welcome.
I had one question. Are you guys done? Okay. How long have you been doing the Jack Rabbit booking?
We just launched it in November.
Okay.
So, yeah, so that's, that's something new and exciting that we just launched. We actually have to do a little bit of modification of our website to get it everywhere that we want. But you'll see the numbers aren't that high yet, because it's mostly just on homepage and on the, it's not at the top of every lodging listing page, which is where we want to get it to, and we have to do some website modifications that are fairly significant before we can do that. But what we have started doing is including a link to our blog, to our booking engine, actually including the booking engine in the bottom of every single blog that we've done since, since we launched it, in I think about November 15th.
Awesome. No, I think that that's going to be a good tool for people coming.
Yeah, and also, another item that we have to do on that is that not all of the lodging properties in Angels Camp or in the county in general are compatible with this reservation system. But it's free for them to sign up to have that additional booking ability through the CVB. And so, since we've launched that, I haven't had a chance to follow up yet with all of those properties. And so we're expecting to get more on board. And I know that Saddle Creek has already signed up for the JRES reservation system, which is completely free, doesn't charge any fees. And I know that Calaveras Big Trees State Park wants to sign up for theirs as well. And so I just need to reach out to all of those lodging properties that you can't book directly from our website yet, and get them on board. It's just a simple software inclusion on their website.
Can you explain a little bit about what that, what it is?
Is this for lodging and excursions and?
No, it's just, it's just a lodging, it's just a booking engine for lodging. So it's housed on our website, all of the Calaveras and Angels Camp lodging properties that are, well, not, not, not the Airbnb properties, but everybody that's a regular lodging property. And, but Airbnb is qualified, too. Anybody that has an Airbnb that wants to be on our website can be. But what we did was we took all of the lodging properties that we're aware of, and we pulled together all of the data on where they're located, photography, description, phone number, contact information, website, all of that, and we sent it off to Jack Rabbit. They put it into their database, and then they create this online booking system that resides on our website, so they can click through and book directly from our site. But that can only happen with lodging properties that are currently, their booking systems that they have are compatible with JRES, which is the system they use. But it's very easy for any lodging property to implement JRES. We paid all of the fees upfront, so there are no fees to any of the lodging properties, and it doesn't take even the slightest percentage from their, from their bookings. So that's the really great part.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. We don't have to do any action. Move on. Okay. Agenda item number two, project selection for the Calaveras Council of Government. Call for projects. Dave.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tonight before you is our three-year call for projects for the Calaveras Council of Governments. Just to give the council aware, over the last six years, we've been fairly successful in obtaining money. We obtained 1.24 million in last year's, last three years, and then three years before that, we received about $360,000, $400,000. So we've been fairly successful. So tonight before you, here we are again, we're recommending some projects, and these are projects that Dave Myers and I kind of sat down and just kind of took a look at, what's on the books, basically depending on the money that's available, and just kind of get, get a better idea of what projects we're looking at. This is not, this is not the only list. I mean, if you have projects that you want on the list, that, or there are projects that you want on, then we'll go. He just numbered them in the, in the order, the not necessary priorities, in terms of, but we just kind of floated some of these, some of these out there. In terms of what the money is, a lot of the money, the Regional Transportation Plan Agency money is, I'll use some acronyms, and I'll kind of explain it. We use CMAC, which is congestion mitigation air quality monies, LTF, which is local transportation funds, and RSTP, which are Regional Transportation Improvement Program dollars. All of these dollars are usually, there's, the CMAC is a, is a federal, is a federal fund. RSTP is a, is a, is a federal, but it's a state exchange, so they're state dollars. And of course, LTF are state dollars as well. So the state dollars, we have a lot more flexibility in how we, in how we can use those. And so, we try to use those wherever we can, because again, less, less requirement, less, less paperwork in terms of getting the projects. As you can see in the report, there's approximately 2.2 million over the next six year, or next five years. Typically, we do the four-year funding cycles. However, a project in the previous call for projects was deleted, and the funds for that project was added to this call. So, and I'm not quite sure if that was a county, I think that was a county project that got deleted, and the money got put in. So what I've done, so what Dave's done, David and I have done, we kind of collaborated on this report, is taken a look at the projects, kind of defined what those projects were, pages two and three. If you want me to go through those for the public, I can go through those for the public if you'd like. But basically, the first phase, the Angels Creek Pedestrian Gap Field Project, it was currently a design project, but we were looking at potential construction dollars in the back end of the project. We've already got 1.7 million to do the side, or 1.9 million to do the sidewalk part. This phase would be do more of the construction of the actual trail part. So, we would need additional dollars, but this was just a good, a good lump, lump phase on that. Capella Road pedestrian improvements. The city was just awarded, that's another, like, construction project to be funded, like, later in the cycle. The reason being is the city just received $174,000 as part of our Sustainable Communities Program to design the Capella pathway and sidewalks on both sides. So again, we wanted to be construction-ready by the next, by the end of the cycle, and we'll be moving, and we should be ready to go. The visitor center electrical vehicle charging station, that's a big, that's a, that's a big thing up and coming. And right now, we don't have anything anywhere. And so we felt that a project at the Visitors Bureau, which is a heavily-used parking lot for the theater, for, to get into downtown, that if we could provide some electrical, electrical charging stations for cars, that that would be a pretty good, that'd be a pretty good project. We also looked at the Valcito Road and Kurt Drive repairs. We're not talking about repairing the whole bridges. We're just looking at rails, we're looking at some bridge deck to make sure that they can, you know, that we can still travel over them and improve the rails, which was one of, at least on the Valcito Bridge, which was outlined as part of the relinquishment on that. So, but we're not looking to do any structural changes to any of the bridges at this point. That would cost a whole lot more money. And we feel that these, these projects would, would save the life of those bridges for a while and keep, and keep moving, keep moving those bridges until, until a long-term solution is decided upon. Intersection, intersection lighting in the state route at Angel Oaks. As you're aware, when you come into town at night or in the fog, you can't see Angel Oaks Drive until you're right there on it. And so this project would kind of install some lighting so that you can see the intersection so that, and that's a major intersection for our, our, our visitors at Worldmark, who usually can't find the place and have a hard time when they come in at night. And so by lighting up that intersection a little bit, they'll be able, at least be able to see Angel Oaks Drive. And it was a fairly cost-effective project. When we look at, of course, the Collector Road and striping, that was a project that we wanted to put back into it since we were trying to go to the COG for the stairs project. And so, but this was a project that we felt that is still necessary. And so we're going to go back after some more COG money to be able to do that project as well. And then the last one is just a pure planning study in terms of the northeast circulation study. And when I say the northeast, that's basically from Dogtown Road out to, all the way out to the intersection with Angel Oaks, behind, behind Middleton's and Street A and all of the circulation and land use studies out there. That's one area that's really, was really neglected as part, in our general plan in terms of circulation. And of course, all, when, when we were doing the Mark Twain Medical Center, of course, all those issues arose with Dogtown Road, Clifton Lane, Street A. And so what we want to do is try to get some money for a planning study to get those, get that all aligned. And so that one, we can put all those roads in our fee, in our, in our fee program, we can start to collect funding for those roads. And then as development occurs, we could, we have at least another project to be able to, to be able to use the monies for. In terms of matches, I mean, all these, as Dave mentioned in the report, there is a match process, 11.47% on the federal projects. The city is recommending that we use toll credits. That's been successful in the past, which allows us to use these credits and not have to use general fund dollars or transportation mitigation dollars to, to match these projects. So we're looking, we'll be, we'll be, when we apply for these, when we do the actual formal applications, we'll be looking to apply for toll credits for the match on these In terms of fiscal impact, again, that was 11.47 match, but we're looking again at toll credits to help alleviate some of that. We do have, since the, since the, the building of all the homes, we have built up our, our traffic mitigation fund. However, and these, all these projects do qualify since they are regional, they're all regional in nature. They all talk about intersections that are, that are planned. And so there's monies that can be used. However, we were trying to use the toll credits to be able to save that money for much bigger projects that we have.
Are you saying toll credits?
Toll credits, yeah, toll, like toll cookies.
Where's that money come from?
That comes from the, it's a fund that's set aside, and of course, Melissa's probably helped me with this, but it's basically a fund that's set aside from the tolls that are taken off from the bridges and from the, all the toll roads and all that gets put into a fund. And then they use that money to, they allow the local agencies to use that money for matching of projects and those types of things.
Cool.
And we've used it probably on, on almost all of our, on all of our federal projects. So it saved us from using transportation mitigation money on that fund. So, so with that, I mean, staff is recommending that, you know, that we, we pick some projects. It's at the pleasure of the council and so, and we'll be able to basically do whatever you want. So at this point, if you have any questions as staff, I'd be happy to answer any of your questions. If not, we can open up the pub, if, if you have questions or open up the public, so.
Do you guys have questions?
I have a couple of quick questions.
Sure.
On the, just out of curiosity, on the electrical vehicles charging station.
Mm-hmm.
Don't the car companies put a lot of those things in or negotiate with the cities and pay, like Tesla paid to put those in or?
They can, yeah. I mean, they, if we do, but we haven't, we haven't tried any of that in the past. And that's the one thing that, when we were putting this together, we weren't sure how were we going to approach and what, who were we going to approach. So if we get the money in terms of putting these in, we will, we will be took, talking to people because there's no universal, at this point, none of the companies have developed a universal where they can use all their same stations. So we'll have to be talking to the car companies to potentially put some in.
So council member, typically where I've seen those go in is a, a gas station or a larger retail outlet will go in and make modification. And a condition of improvement for the modifications will be that they install those outlets in. So that's typically how I've seen them implemented in the past in, in a bunch of cities, other than the Tesla-type example.
Yeah. Okay. And then also the, the lighting at SR4 and Angel Oaks Drive. So that would be kind of like the street lights, but on the Angel Oaks part, we have to avoid, we can't do any on Caltrans, on Highway Four, right?
Well, we'll, we'll, we'll try to work with Caltrans to see if we can't get one or two on. So we're, basically it's to round the corner.
Yeah.
I mean, similarly, we had reflectors up there at one time, but those are all now gone. But these would be kind of more, I would say more considered Ballard style, at least around, around the corner so that people can see the corner and make sure they don't fall off into the, into the, into the valley.
So we'll work with Caltrans on that.
Yeah, definitely.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I got.
I think that's a, is an important one. I know that, I live on Gold Cliff near Moxie and GPS sometimes will send you down McCauley Road from up there. And then they tried to go down Moxie and they hit the dead, you know, end there and turn around. Then they asked me, where's, how do you get here? You know, and I go, well, you gotta, you know. But, so anyway, yeah, that, I've noticed that a lot. I thought about that. It's a bad turn there. Also, I guess with the bridge, is the Caltrans doing the other bridge? They're going to be doing work on one bridge, right?
That's on, not, not, these are both the R bridges. These are the Kurt Drive Bridge, the bridge that goes over Angels Creek, that one. Yeah, they are doing, they are proposing a shop project for the, what I call the 1909 Bridge or the, the one that's on 49.
That's what I thought.
But, but these two are VTO R bridges, the Valcito Road and the Kurt Drive Bridge.
Okay. That's on.
Any other question? Okay. I have a couple of questions. With the intersection, intersection lighting for an Angels Oaks, is there any way that we can combine that with a wayfinding if we're going to be doing that type of improvement at that area to do an entrance for Angels, for the 449 entrance for the corridor?
We could try, as a comprehensive project, we could try to add a, maybe a lighted sign or something that, that's something that I, that we'll probably have to check with Caltrans on to see what we can do in terms of an entrance sign. Or just do a, because we, there are actual, because we have the grand entry, we have the entry signs, but we also have the, like I call the pole signs, which have, which have, will have, you know, like Worldmark to the right and Golf Course and then to the thing, which we might even be able to light that thing up. So, I mean, there might be a way where we might be able to get it on a sign or whatever, but when we define it in the application, we'll, we'll, we'll do it multiple ways so that.
Can we look into that? Because I think that would be a good start to, for the entrance. And especially if we're going to be working with Caltrans, we might as well take advantage of that. And then I know I've mentioned it multiple times at the COG meeting, but with that area and planning with Caltrans, has there been any further talks about the 449 trucking parking? And, and putting that into a joint project with the county or?
At this point in time, when we get the draft PSR, because that was, that, we threw that kind of in, that, that concept. And we're due the draft PSR next week on the 20th. So we'll be able to look at that document and see what, see if they've, if they've talked about it. Because it include, it should include all the five intersections as well. So we'll, when that, when we get that document, we'll be able to, we'll be able to pinpoint if they, if they took it seriously or else we got to jab them again with it and put it in there or kind of design it in, into the project.
Okay. And then I know that there should have been back and forth, but has there been other, further talks about school traffic circulation from Angels Oaks over to Amador Tuami Road?
Oh, through like Moxie Way, through the back road? Well, the, the planning commission at their last meeting adopted a resolution of intent to create a, a golf cart ordinance. And so what we'll be doing as a part of that, developing that ordinance, be creating a pedestrian element in there, kind of change it into like a non-motorized type, not non-motorized, but a, a non-vehicular or, you know, light vehicles and pedestrian through those accesses. So yeah, it, it is coming. Right now, we haven't, we haven't been able to talk to the property owners at this point. They haven't, and they haven't, the ones I have talked, I have talked to a couple of them and they're still kind of weighing their options of what we can do on that.
I guess I was thinking more of the school buses at least getting in and out through there, like during certain hours.
Yeah, that, that, when we mention vehicle, when we mention vehicles at this point, unless we, unless the city's willing to pave streets back there, they don't, the, some of the properties I have talked to about, because when I talked to them about the golf carts and the pedestrians, I said, what about vehicles and stuff? And they're, they were hesitant even with the golf carts and the pedestrians, but that's something that we can work on them with. Because, and we would probably want road, real, we would want a street somewhere, one of those, either McCauley or Sierra, one of those. I don't think property owners would want both because some of those property owners own on both sides. So, but that's something we are continuing to work at on with these. And we're, and we're, I'm kind of working it in with the golf carts and the pedestrians and kind of getting just their idea of opening those things up for streets. So.
And then, so at a planning meeting, we talked about alternate routes due, after this past year with the closure of 49 and not having access out of, in and out of that area for the annex. Is that something that we can look through this with traffic mitigation?
Like a Southwest?
Yeah.
Well, staff is going to, going to be proposing a, which I'd be coming to you before I do this, but we have an, a partnership planning application process that we're coming up in, I think the, the applications are due in February or March. And I'm going to be asking, coming back to you at the next meeting, to ask to submit an application to do a partnership plan grant for Trion's property. Because that's, that's where that will probably be had and allow, along that, any alignment will have to go through that piece of property. And so it will allow us to take a look at alternative and how we can get, get people back and forth through, I'll take a look at Park and take a look at Sonora and how we can get people back and through there and around the community that way as well. So yeah.
I just want to make sure it wasn't lost and, okay.
That's the only question I have.
I have one more, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Okay. The Collector Road striping and stop sign replacement.
Yeah.
And I know we've talked about using, and I was wondering, is this other monies than the one we're thinking of using for the staircase there? How does that, what, what are you kind of asking here?
Well, basically what we're saying is, is that because we're looking to move potential RSTP money from the project that's on right now to the staircase.
Yes.
And so that, so that project that the money is coming, going away from is now going to need a funding source. So now we're saying is we're coming back, we're coming back and saying we still need that project, but we need, now we need $80,000 to do the striping and not necessarily the, the stairs. So that's kind of why we brought it, we brought it back.
All right.
And we're still working on alternatives and alternative funding to, to do the stairs because there is some budgeted dollars, there is, there's some other proj, there's some other project dollars that might be, might be available. So we might be able to do a bunch of, another type of project as well.
Okay.
So.
Any other, before I turn it over? Are there, are there any public comment?
For a long, long while, the city has been looking at Angels Creek and exploiting that wonderful asset that we have here. And I, I think if, if possible, it would be very desirable to put in a walkway from Stealthy Park to the 49 as a first step. And I know there's always money for planning and planning and, and more planning, but to actually put something down to construct the pathway. If you go to, if we, as we have to go up to Murphy's, we see what they've done along their creek. And that's the same creek that flows through our city. So I would just urge you, if possible, to see if you can scratch together some construction money from a start, from Stealthy down to the 49. Just imagine what that would do in terms of attracting visitors. And that's my only comment on, on these projects, but best of luck on them.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay. So what, so these seven, looking for a vote on that one? Is there anything that council wants to change on these or are we happy with the suggestions?
I'll, I'll move that we accept staff's recommendation to select the projects as listed.
Okay, I'll second.
And that will include with the wayfinding, more research on the wayfinding?
That will include, when we put the application together for the intersection lighting, we'll, we'll include a component regarding a wayfinding.
And I would also try and encourage, if we can get the number three to a priority, just to start bringing people to make them stop downtown.
Okay.
If that's possible.
Yeah.
Maybe that can be a start to bringing that, starting that turn. Okay, so, council member, Bill?
I'll accept those amendments.
Okay.
Do we have a second?
I have a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are.
Next, we have calendar.
Tomorrow at 10:00 AM is a COG meeting. I think that's, is that you, Scott?
Uh, no.
City staff. Okay. Oh, okay. That's right, I'm confusing it with DAC. 10:30 on the 18th is DAC. And I believe you may be the primary.
I will be absent.
You will be absent?
Yeah. I've already notified Debbie.
And does Veronica know?
I don't know, I was in the doctor's.
Okay. All right. 8:30 Museum Commission meeting on the 18th. UWPA is on Tuesday, the 23rd at 5:30. 8:30 on the 24th is the CVD Board meeting.
On the 23rd, we won't have any, any representation either. Jo and I are both out of town.
And at 1:00 PM on the 26th is a Transit JPA meeting. And we're, we're back here for council on the 6th at 6:00 PM.
Okay. And with that?
Madam Mayor, I do anticipate that we'll probably have a closed session on, on the 6th.
The motion to adjourn?
Moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you. [end of transcript]